I hope everybody's had a chance to look them over. Need a motion to approve. Have a motion from Commissioner Bezette.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm...
He wants a second. He went, "Will you?" He was the last one. Okay. You have a second.
A second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. All right. Our next item we have is for St. Joe redevelopment, AC upstate. Bill?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Now that we're in the new year, we had our meeting today and decided to move forward with some new projects. Last year, we had a lot of focus on the waterfront connectivity in the downtown, like on the gateway on Fourth Street. And this year, we're geared more towards the actual downtown areas and improvements in downtown. And one of the first projects we're going to do, this has been something that's been looming for months now. There are two oak trees in City Commons, and everyone loves oak trees. We all do. These two oak trees in particular are just north of the parking lot there. I'm sorry, just south of the parking lot. And the two large ones, I've had a lot of complaints from the people at the farmer's market, people that run it, people that set up there. And they are destroying the brick pavers, they're destroying the concrete, the roots are coming out of the ground. I was told by some tree people that they were the wrong kind of oak tree to be planting in urban environment. And there is no fix for it. They're eventually going to rip more and more havoc until they're dealt with. So, we voted tonight to go ahead and take just those two oak trees out. There's four oak trees on the property. Two are along Seventy, one much smaller than you have the two on next to the parking lot. We're going to remove those two large oak trees and then come back in and fill that entire triangle section of earth with brick pavers. And that'll clean it up and give us a lot more usability of the property. Again, I talked to the farmer's market and talking to people that perform down there, and they all think that'd be a nice change. They use tents and whatnot anywhere in summertime, so... But it's something we have to do eventually, sooner or later.
Yep.
And we're going to start working on Reed Avenue, doing some things in those planter beds and making things more usable and upgrade a little bit and move forward.
Any questions? Bill? All right. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Bill.
All right. Good to see you, Attorney.
Good to see you, Mayor.
You too, sir.
Fellow commissioners. I have one thing on the agenda tonight. It's ordinance 546, which is the yearly amendment to the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan. I need a vote to allow for the first reading, and I request to have it advertised.
Second motion. Have a motion from Commissioner Lowry. Second, Commissioner Bezette. All in favor say aye.
Ordinance number 546, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, amending the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan. Amending the five-year capital improvement plan, adopting the updated school district five-year work plan, providing for repeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for inefficiency. And that's all I have as hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Jim?
Yes, sir, Mayor. The first item we have is in reference to the Nineteenth Street Bridge. We've talked about it a few times. Commissioner Lowry talked to you tonight about it.
I don't have any update. The only thing I wish to do is to make it pedestrian only. That bridge, when and if we do go back and build that thing, and if we can find the money to do it, I don't want to keep it on the agenda each meeting, but I do want to get everybody's feel for that. And then, if we can find the money this year, if not, maybe next year in the future. But just everybody's thought.
I think we need to move forward with it as a pedestrian only. It does, I think, serve a purpose there. And I'd like to see us get a good firm estimate from Mr. Grantman and make a decision on it, one way or the other.
Mr. Commissioner, you know what we're talking about is the bridge in there? And we tore it down, it was unsafe. Don't want to put it back. Some people suggested maybe we do a golf cart, but we don't want to do a golf cart.
We'll walk with it.
Yeah, just walk with it.
Basically, so, you know, a lot of kids go to school right there at Palm Boulevard, where it crosses right there between Eighteenth and Nineteenth Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. If you want to get a firm number.
Yes, sir.
We worked it up, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll have it back next meeting.
Thank you.
The next item we have is in reference to the St. Joe Building train. Commissioner Bezette want to talk to you tonight about it?
Yeah. Brought up last three meetings, but I think we agreed last meeting to get a fence put around it, raw iron style, I'm sure it'll be all aluminum, but that style, probably four feet. So, you know, folk couldn't just jump over it. With the gate, I think Jim's been talking to John, and Braceful, Braceful out of Bluntstown has a service, and I don't know who else. We might could buy the pieces and do it ourselves. John, you got a little something on that?
Yes, sir, I do. And I looked at that today, and you're absolutely correct, Commissioner. I think the most economical way for us to do it would be to buy the parts and install it ourselves. And you can buy those from local building supplies. And what I put together today was for the aluminum four-foot powder-coated fencing. It's going to be right about $3,100. It would be about a sixty-six by eighteen rectangle, which should fit the train well.
Right.
With the gate.
Yeah. At some point in time, we are going to have to repaint, repaint the train just for cosmetics only. We'll just have to repaint it over the rust and all, I think. But because if we got to try to get the rust off, it may not be a whole lot left to it. But at some point in time, we really are going to have to, have to do that.
I think that was about three or four thousand. When we pressure washed it and painted it last, I think it was about $35,000.
Oh, just look that up. Wow.
Yeah, that was, that was 2007.
Before my time, I think.
Yeah, that was a long time.
John, if you'll, I'll get with you, and we'll get some design looks, I guess you would say, on the fence to bring back to the board to see if they...
I'll be glad to give you this after the meeting if you'd like to look at what we found today.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. We can, we can do that. And I'm pretty sure we voted to move forward with it, didn't we, guys? Last meeting? Jim, did we vote to go ahead and do that?
Look at our minutes. Look at them. When am I due just to go up for price? Prices, maybe?
Because of liability, it should be in this section.
So, what we have in our last minutes, we put Commissioner Bezette requested this remain on the agenda while prices for fencing, the train are obtained, is what we have in the meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, next meeting, I hope, I hope to have firm pricing and a look for everybody to take a look at, and we'll vote on it. And I think for liability reasons, we've just got it to do.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I've got.
On the new business, the first item we have is in reference to ethics training courses. We do have the Northwest Florida League of Cities meeting that's going to be here in town on the 22nd. So, if anybody would like to sign up for classes, they will be offered classes during the day, and we can get you signed up. If anybody just let us know, myself or Ms. Pierce, and we'll get you signed up.
Yeah, I've already signed up. I sign up through the internet.
I'm signing in if you want to put me in.
Yeah, I brought, I mentioned this to Jim to bring it up because it's in town, they're holding it, so can't go ahead. Yeah. Free to put me down.
Me too, Jim. Put me down.
It doesn't say what time that I...
I'm not ready.
Is there a time?
One o'clock to five o'clock. And then, there's something going on after that, and they will have a dinner, the League of Cities is. They have their meeting, their quarterly meeting or something?
Yes, sir. The meeting will be here, the quarterly meeting will be here, and then there'll be a dinner served afterwards this morning. We'll get everybody signed up. The next item we have is in reference to the Washington Improvement Group lease agreement. It's just time for you to look at renewing the lease agreement. I'm sure you're designed to do so, Mayor.
Is it pretty much just like last year's?
That's the same. We put the same one in there that we had last year on there. Ms. Letha Matthews is here, too, if you've got any questions about the actual actions.
Have you looked at it, Ms. Letha?
No, I have not. But if you said it's the same, then it should be, it will be okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If nothing have changed, then it should be the same.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
We need, we need a motion to...
Yes, sir. We need the same lease for another year. And I'll give it to Mr. McKay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion and we'll sign a new agreement.
All right. I got a motion from Commissioner Bezette. We have a second.
A second.
Second, Commissioner Winston. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
The next item is in reference to League of Cities actions items. Commissioner Ashbrook is not able to be here tonight, but he wanted to mention to you that there's several items that, in reference to home rule, and he was wanting to see if it would be okay for him to go and represent the city at the, at the meeting that's coming up in Tallahassee in reference to these action items. Page twenty-four.
Yeah, this is regarding the bill that Representative Beshear's put in there to, for a million six to help with the paving of Long Avenue. This is, that's one of them I know.
Yes. It's supposed to be page twenty-three, too, actually. Mr. Lowry listed all the different action items that he was, that the city's trying to, or the League of Cities is trying to advocate.
Well, I know that was one of them. I, I kudos, and I appreciate Representative Beshear's putting that in there for us and going to bat for us. But we still need to reach out because it's a moving target.
I think it'd be great to have loops on the ground.
Yes.
Right there. I think that would be great.
And I know there were other items that, that are on there that...
Yes, sir. The number is actually page twenty-three, the page before lists all the different items. And that's coming up before the legislature this year that the League of Cities is trying to advocate on our behalf.
I'll make a motion to represent the city at that meeting.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bezette. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Second, Commissioner Lowry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
The next item is in just reference to the mayor's project. Just something for you all to get your thoughts together if you want to inform somebody because you do have a vacancy there. Mayor, in case you're out of town, or hit somebody.
All right. We're going to ring one tonight?
That's entirely up to you.
Do you have anybody want to nominate anybody?
I can't make a motion to nominate somebody.
We can, Commissioner Ashbrook gets that.
That's fine.
You got some time to think about it.
Time is fine.
All right. Table that. And the last item is in reference to Scott grant cycle. Went to DOT last week. We do have the one Scott grant that's in queue that's going to go from Sixteenth Street up to the current building we're in on Garrison Avenue, so we have already got approval on that. But there is a new grant cycle that's coming up. I think they said out of ninety, it was ninety-two eligible cities, and there was only eight that's been awarded this last cycle. So, we got, we got pretty lucky in the last one. But it's time again to think about it. And what they do is they said the biggest criteria is pavement type. So, if you look at your worst road in town and think about things like where it passes a school, or if it goes by a daycare, nursing home, hospital, those kind of things will get you a few more points. So, it's not something we got to do tonight, but by the next meeting, we probably need to try to figure out where we want to try to go for the money so we can put an application together for it. The next item we had, we did have two items that were added. The first one, Mayor wanted to talk to you about trees along the bike path, which is right here on Garrison Avenue.
Yeah, I'm talking about across the street, the little scrub bushes. I don't know what kind of plant it is, but I've had several people come to me and say they just look terrible and want to know if we could take them out. And I said, "Well, I'll put them on the agenda and find out." I think they look terrible myself.
They do. They're crepe murals, but they don't look like crepe murals.
So, you know, I would like to see if we can't just remove them, and maybe at a later date, put something back, but at least get, because I think it looks better when I'm gone. It does when I'm busy. I mean, I got one guy, he hits me every morning at breakfast. Every morning. And he says, "Well, you the mayor?" I said, "I don't mean I can make it done. I got to get everybody else on board, too." So, John and them said they can get them out of there. I talked with John, I talked with Jim.
Not cut them, but...
Get them out.
Remove them completely.
Remove them. Okay, I'm for that.
We're going to need a motion on them.
Good with it.
You going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
All right, we got a motion. Ms. Lowry, we got a second?
A second.
Second, Commissioner Winston. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
The last item we have is in reference to the Tenth Street Recreation Complex. We had it on that, we had it at a meeting today, and what we did was, we'd actually, the board, or the actual advisory board, made a recommendation for you and for the county commission to move forward with conceptual design. So, it's there for your first, you and tonight, to either take action or we can table it to the next meeting.
I think we've really made some good progress in the last month to get this thing going. Conceptual is wonderful. We, we actually connected the walking path completely around this new complex, which some folks, you know, would like. Got pickleball courts, six fields, two tee ball fields, three parking lots, closing part of Eighth Street, which is in bad shape anyway. We'd have to replace it. It's cheaper to close it. Closing Tenth Street from, from the, part of, part of Tenth Street, from the alley to the bike path, I believe it would be called. And that's for a safety issue as well as a design issue. I really, I think we've come a long way. There's restrooms, plenty of restroom facilities. No, that's, that's an item I'd like to... Got batting cages in it.
Yep.
How many of those we have play?
Nine.
Nine batting cages?
Twelve pickleball courts.
Twelve pickleball courts. Proposed splash pad in there, playground, pavilion, restrooms. We're talking two press boxes, right? Two press boxes in there? Where is the... Oh, there it is. Okay. I looked for the playground. I found it, get played.
We'll have two tee ball fields instead of one by moving it over in this area.
And have them right next to each other.
Right next to each other.
Not listed on there, but we talked about maybe improvement to the basketball court behind the stack house. But that's not listed on there, I don't think.
Yeah. I think that'd be pretty easy fix, don't you think?
Yeah, I agree.
Without having it. I mean, we could, we could actually vote on this proposal and add that later or something, I think. Because I believe the county would like us to give them some idea of how we feel about this before they move forward on, on that extra penny of bed tax.
Right.
We just need a motion.
On... So, we're definitely closing off Eighth Street? That's what I would like to see.
If you're facing the stack house, on the left-hand side of the stack house, down towards Garrison.
Okay.
That way, you can still get to the stack house.
Stack house would be right, would be right in here somewhere.
Yeah.
In the bike, I mean, the walking path there. And so, you bring your kids to the stack house, they have, you know, walking out here, and they can still get out.
Clay, if anybody from the public wanted some of these, how would they get one?
I've got a few extra tonight, and then I can bring more off to y'all, or, you know, whatever makes the most sense. But I do have a few extra tonight.
Okay. Man, definitely just gives myself a couple of input. It's my concern, my biggest concern, is probably having...
Maybe as far as the conceptual plan, I think we should probably agree on this.
Agree on the conceptual plan. And we, I guess we could tweak it a little bit as we go.
I mean, it's definitely going to be a phased project.
Right.
No question about it. And the infrastructure is going to be the toughest part.
Yeah.
Of course. But I know Commissioner Quinn has been chairman of this committee and definitely sees a need, along with the other two.
We definitely need...
The other two. I think all of them on board.
What would we want, with five restrooms in that area?
That's right. Yes, sir.
I'd like, I'd like...
I think it's a good plan.
I do. I like it.
Mr. Lexton, you got any? I know you're relatively new, and it's kind of been an ongoing project. You probably hadn't been to any of the meetings. I know I've only been to one.
I haven't.
I wanted to see if you had any info.
I'm just taking it in right now, just...
Yeah, we just...
It look like it's going to be nice.
Well, Sandy's looking at it, and Sandy's approved of what we've got shown here. He thinks this is a good plan, and personally, I do, too.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm the city's representative on this committee, but I still like to make a motion to approve this conceptual plan as presented, and I don't, it's called Option Three.
Yes, Option Three.
Option Three, and I'd like to present this to the county that we have approved it. And then, we got to really get down nuts and bolts about how we're going to pay for it.
All right, we got a motion on the fourth from Commissioner Bezette. Do we have a second?
I'm, I'll make a second.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Lowry. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, I mean, I appreciate the county working with us.
You too.
It's a, it's a big project, and it's, it's nice to see the city and the county working together.
Yep.
They're good in this community.
Clay's, Clay's done a wonderful job of getting ideas and putting them on paper, and this is, this is wonderful.
All right. So, we got a first and a second. Any more discussion? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
That's all the other items.
All right. Hold it works?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Just a couple of things real quick. Just to give the board an update on our CDBG project for the water, water line over there. We're, we're probably ninety-eight percent complete. We still have one run from North Garrison to North Bay to complete. We're waiting on the board and crew to shoot one shot for us, and we can complete that. So, with any luck, by the end of the week, you know, we're, we're in the pressure test. And so, we're slightly behind North Florida, but almost on purpose, in my opinion, because they're going through their flushing and pressure test now. So, you know, once that clears, then we can push ours right behind and connect them all, so.
Project seems like it's made some headway.
Yeah.
Even through the holidays and everything.
Right. So, that's just a quick update as to where we're at. And I did receive an email from Clay today for a second phase that we discussed, I think, you know, trying to loop in Highway ninety-eight, using some of that North Florida money. You know, we were well under budget. So, when we met with the ladies that came down a few weeks ago before the holidays, you know, we verbally explained what we were wanting to do, and they didn't seem to have a problem with it. So, now, I've got the plan from Clay. I'll put the numbers together, give it to Mr. Anderson, he can set it up, and we'll sort of await the response. But what that will do for us, if we're successful, is it will take that old six-inch metallic line on Highway ninety-eight and get it out of play altogether. So, it's gone. That should be enough money to do that. So, the other thing I have that I forgot to actually have Mr. Anderson put on there would be to get permission to go out for bid on a trailer. It was part of the budget last year for the equipment trailer. And unfortunately, I cannot find one that's on state contract, so that puts us into bidding mode because it's going to be over our $10,000 threshold. Right now, we're looking at probably around thirteen. For the trailer, we budgeted eighteen. So, but I still need permission to bid. And if we can get that, then I can hopefully bring it back to you before the next meeting for approval.
Second motion? A motion from Commissioner Lowry. Want a second?
A second.
Second, Commissioner Bezette. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
All you have?
Questions for me.
Do I have any questions for John? Mike, thank you, John. Larry?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have on page twenty-eight of the agenda, the bids we received for the hundred and forty-four filter modules for the water plant. We'd like the board's approval to accept the low bid by Sinora Water America. And also, you notice on page twenty-nine, there is a freight charge that comes with this, so you've got to add that on to it.
That's going to move it up to eighty-two.
Yes, sir, eighty-two. Yes, sir.
We ever had these people do workforce before?
No, sir. This is a new company. We did have them come to the plant, they did give a demonstration, we've checked their references. It looks good on papers, I'll tell you.
Are they the same membrane?
Same, yes. Yes, sir. The only difference is the pore size, but we, we did a study on that and found that they're, you know, basically the same. There's not going to be any difference, really.
What about warranty?
Ten-year. Ten-year pro rate.
Oh, yeah. What about the warranty on the other two? Of course, one, one's so far out, I wouldn't worry about that, but the one that's ninety-thousand, what was there?
Evoc was one year.
One year?
Yes, sir.
Wow. I'll make a motion to accept one bid.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Bezette. We have a second.
A second.
Second, Commissioner Lexton. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Do you got any questions for Larry? All right. Finance director.
Mr. Mayor, we had our CPA came in last week to do the field work for our fiscal two thousand sixteen-seventeen audit. He's completed that field work, and so, the ball's in his court now. It seemed, everything seemed fine. Didn't have any major fluctuations in revenues or expenses from prior years. Yeah, and we just wait for him to complete his audit work, and we'll have that out to you shortly. Well, hopefully by March.
All right. All right. Anything else?
No, I should have December's financials out this week, in your boxes this week as well. Those have not been completed yet.
All right. Any questions for Mike?
Thanks, sir.
Jim, are you going to report on the wastewater plant?
Yes, sir. Kevin is actually, he did bring on one new employee last week, so he does have a full staff at this point in time. And we have responded back to the letter we received from FDP, so we're waiting for information to come back on that. But just, we guess have a full staff.
All right. All right. City engineer?
Yes, sir. Couple of beats. The bug ramp project, bug ramp project, there's still some more sealed there on the ramp that I told them we'd like to get out, especially with the negative tides we've seen this week. I went down again today and took pictures and showed them specifically. You know, it's easy to get right now with the waters so low so far there. And then, of course, along the northern bank, there's still some areas I think we can get some dirt out. So, they'll, they'll do that. There's a little pile of lumber they still need to get out. But all, they addressed the cracks, they sealed the cracks. I think that looks a lot better on the concrete. They replaced the big one that we told them to replace. So, I think that looks a lot better than it did.
Yeah, I went down and looked at it.
So, that's kind of where that's at. We're also waiting from FWC to give us a final decision on whether they'll fund... the ramp that I told them we'd like to get out, especially with the negative tides we've seen this week. I went down again today and took pictures and showed them specifically, you know, it's easy to get right now with the waters so low so far there and then, of course, um, along the northern bank, there's still some areas I think we can get some dirt out. So they'll, they'll do that. There's a little pile of lumber they still need to get out, um, but all, they addressed the cracks, they sealed the cracks. I think that looks a lot better, um, on the concrete. They replaced the big one that we told them to replace, um, so I think that looks a lot better than it did.
Yeah, I went down.
So that's kind of where that's at. We're also waiting, um, from FWC to give us a final decision on whether they'll fund replacing that, it's probably about fifteen feet wide piece of concrete, kind of right at the top of the ramp that's pretty jagged.
It looks bad.
They, we've asked, we asked months ago, but we still don't have an official answer from them. So there's still potential that they say, yeah, we'll fund that, but really, we're done with all of the work except for those few minor things still to clean up, but unless they come back and say, hey, we'll do, we'll fund the concrete work, so that's really where we're at with it.
Two, two questions on that. Uh, on the concrete work that area, you gotta estimate what that would cost?
I think it was twenty-one thousand, using a whole number, I think it was twenty-one three something.
Well, I'd like to use their money, but if it's something necessary to make the project complete, we, we do have a boat ramp fund and that's what we, what we pledge that we'd use it for. I don't know how much it's in it, but.
I think it's eighteen, but I, I can't remember. That's off the top of my head.
Okay, just an idea. And the second question is, uh, do you think they're motivated to come and get that silt out?
Yes, sir. I've talked to them.
Okay.
I mean, I sent them pictures again today, but I've also talked to them verbally and they're gonna look.
Cause we only have, uh, two or three weeks, we got to close it out?
Well, that's the thing, they hadn't sent us the official extension amendment and the, the conversation I've had with them is, um, they're kind of waiting to see when we need it to be extended to where they send it. So part of that rests on, um, are they gonna let us do this extra concrete work, you know, kind of thing? If they don't, then yeah, it's closed, anywhere it'd be done, but.
The only thing I've heard was, oh, it's somewhat minor, but not, but they, the, when they put the sod out, they didn't necessarily grade the, the ground, the dirt there.
There, there were some places that were kicked up, um, the sod was.
Yeah.
It was. Um, and I think they, I mean, I don't know if you never.
I haven't been, been down there since though.
But, um, this morning when I was down, I thought it looked a lot better than it did, um, the last time I was there when I told them about it. Again, there may still be some more, I mean, if there is, we'll get them to come do some more, but I think it looks a lot closer to being able to run a lawnmower over it without, you know, just destroying it. And that was the main concern I had with the sod thing was try to mow it and it's like this, you know, you're gonna kill it all, but. That was it on the boat ramp for me. Um, CDBG, as Mr. Grant said, going, going well and, and really maybe in the next three weeks, it's possible that, you know, that thing's closed out. Uh, it's, it's moving along. They're flushing and going through, um, so they'll, they'll start potentially, probably next week is realistic, on actually swapping customers over to the new line, so, uh, I, I think it's going well. And I don't have anything on Jones Home Center Sewer tonight, but I do have something on Long Avenue, uh, just as a, we've been kind of brainstorming, what do we do for construction funding on that project, just the state appropriation thing, when it doesn't come through, we're back down to basically have, just as kind of a reminder and a quick recap, we got one point four million in max money between what you budgeted and what the bond has that goes on. State appropriation ask for one point six for a three million dollar project to take care of, placing the water line, um, replacing the gravity sewer, rebuilding the road, uh, placing the storm, what is it, water, storm, sewer, road. Um, so what do we do if that doesn't, if we don't get any money from the state, what do we do? And so we've been talking with SRF for the last couple of weeks. It's the state revolving fund, it's a part of DEP. You've gotten financing through them, funding through them in the past for different projects on water and wastewater. So we've been talking to their wastewater folks and they have, um, if you go through the process and jump through their hoops, it's possible if you get approved, um, their, their funding categories kind of fall off as a seventy, eighty, and ninety percent forgiveness loan. And so what that would mean is, um, you know, if you ask for X number of dollars and you qualify, the low end is seventy percent forgiveness, so you're paying essentially thirty cents on the dollar for what you're asking. And so it's a possible way to stretch your money, to stretch your, you know, your one point four million into something to, to help fund the project overall. So, um, I think it's, I can't see a downside to it in all the discussions we've had. The, the idea is, uh, that, you know, when you get done with a project and it's day, day one of when the loan portion would begin, that you have enough money to pay it off. I mean, that would be the idea going into it. And SRF understands that and they're fine with that. So it's really, uh, the idea is to, to stretch your dollar, you know, stretch the, the money you have and then try to, try to get some more construction money. So, um, some of the, the timeline with SRF, uh, they meet four times a year, um, and so how it kind of shake out, I think, is, uh, the first step would be submitting to them a facilities plan, which is basically you're gonna identify your need, you're gonna identify the solution to that need, which would be fix the sewer and prepare the road and those things along avenue. Um, they approve that and then it kind of gets you set up to go through there. They meet quarterly and it gets you kind of in their timeline of when they meet, um, and they would have to go through a couple of different approvals, but, um, long story short, the timeline would probably check out to be February of next year, potentially you could get approved for whatever construction money you needed. So, um, it's really, you know, I view it kind of as two fold ones, a plan B for what do you do if you don't get the money from the state, um, and then, and then secondly, obviously, you know, stretching your money out. And on a seventy, thirty, it could be as high as ninety, ten, but just even at seventy, thirty, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good forgiveness rate, so. Also, as part of that, if you wanted to, uh, with SRF, if it's in the First Street Lift Station in the past, if you wanted to go and, and, you know, get something on the First Street Lift Station, you could add that in there. I don't think it hurts you or helps you to add that in there to this, um, but it's just something that's been talked about that's coming at some point. So those are some of the discussions we've had with them. Uh, like, there's, you know, probably a ton of questions that come after that, but, um, that's generally speaking, I can't really see a downside to it. If at any point you want to get out, you get out. Um, what I mean by that is if you get approved, say the state appropriation money comes through and you don't need SRF, well, then you don't take any money from SRF, you know, and so there's no penalty to any of that.
So, so you recommend right now go ahead and submit, then make a proposal, uh, complete wish list and see.
Yes, sir.
So we're ready.
A facilities plan is what it's called, is what they call it.
Yeah.
And you submit that along with, that kind of gets the ball rolling to where you can ask for money later, you know, so you're not really asking for money today, you're just essentially making an application, but that application is a facilities plan is what they call it, so.
Clay, can we utilize some type of match if we were able to apply for something with the Water Management District or DEP with, for instance, on, uh, the lift station on First Street? Um, can you match, utilize some kind of, I mean, I would guess you could.
Yeah, and that's, um, so I think out of the one point four you have, you know, you, 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 you would utilize that money, uh, for basically, call it match or call it to pay off the loan.
Yeah, to pay off.
You know what I mean?
Right.
That's, that's my thoughts going forward is not to take on a bunch of debt. I mean, yes, you could do it that route, but ideally, you go in knowing what you have for match or knowing what you have that you can pay off, you know, in terms of loan amount and you just kind of.
I got you.
Work within the numbers to where on day one, you pay it off. And so what you're really getting is a forgiveness or a grant is really what you're using it for. And like I said, in our discussion with SRF, we've explained all of that and held anything back.
Yes, sir.
Here's the city, I think the city ideally won't be new and, and they're fine with that. They're fine paying off on day one, it's no penalty or, you know, anything like that, so.
I'm fine moving forward.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
But then, so.
We back to the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll start on that and then, um, I think one of the requirements is probably one of your meetings in February, we'll advertise it as a public hearing specifically for an SRF application. That's part of one of the boxes they want to check, so we'll, we'll work to get that done and work on the plan, but that's what I had on Long Avenue.
Need a motion for that, though. Clint, could go out about facilities grant?
It's probably.
Motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'm gonna motion Commissioner Lowry. You have a second?
Sir, Commissioner Langston, I think he was first.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four.
That was all I had, unless you have questions for me on anything.
How many of the concrete there at the boat ramp? You remember?
I can look. I wanna say it was fifteen, eighteen feet wide by the length, by the width of the ramp.
Thirty, maybe. Twenty, about thirty.
Uh, it's both sides, so maybe sixty.
Okay.
I, I can look, I have it.
So if we do it cheaper ourselves, I think see John over there with his pencil on fire.
I was just thinking I would be asked soon.
Yeah. I hope, I hope we don't have to spend our money once again, like I said, but, you know, thank Clay for being a bulldog in that, uh, hundred thousand still out there.
That's right.
We, we need lights, we need some light.
That's right.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Clay. All right, next is Code Enforcement, uh, just getting updates every week. Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The only thing I have on the agenda for tonight is, uh, your consideration of a contract to hire a part-time employee.
Explain to us.
Uh, we're looking to hire a part-time person to do some administrative investigative work, some of both, uh, roughly twenty-nine hours a week is what the contract is for.
So there'll be no, no kind of benefits or anything like that?
There'd be no benefits.
No overtime?
Right, that's right. You'll only get paid for twenty-nine hours at the, the rate of pay that's in the contract.
And when would this person want to start?
Uh, that, with your approval of the contract, we'd have to work that out, either mid-April or maybe first of May.
At the end, I, I talked to Matt quite a bit about it and since we're talking about mid-April, May, I've got a few more things I need to talk about, I think, before I'd like to make a decision tonight, so if it's not of urgency, wouldn't mind having it on the agenda for this meeting in February, so I can get a little bit better handle on that and some other things that might go along with it. That's just my, that's just me.
I know I spoke to you about it, uh, a couple of different times too, and, uh, you've got my support. Um, I don't know, rest of the board members?
I haven't found a problem with it, you know, I think it would be something that would be beneficial to the city and save the city some money in the long run. Uh, is it something that can wait until the first meeting February or you need something?
That's up to y'all. I mean, this, this person would need to make preparations as far as letting their boss know that they were taking this job and that sort of thing, so, you know, I wouldn't want to wait too long for it.
So we're looking at, we all are having a mind, who's gonna?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I think it's a good idea. I think you need as much, you need as much help as you can, you know? Um, what, what type of work he's gonna be doing? I mean, I heard you say investigate.
Yes, the, the person will be doing, helping with investigations and doing administrative type stuff.
And I think basically the investigation's gonna be taken off by officers.
That is, that is the goal.
Right.
That way, free up the rest officers, more time to be out doing stuff they need to be doing instead of, you know, investigating cases.
Yeah.
That's what we're gonna save the money right there.
Yeah, and I, I told Matt, you know, along, anything he proposes, it's gotta be good for the whole city, if it's good for the whole city, you know, I'm, I don't.
And this will be, it'll, it'll save us some money in the long run.
Couple, just, you know, some other things I'd rather talk to Matt about for me, but, um, whatever the pleasure board is.
I, I mean, I'm ready to move forward, but.
Will you make a motion?
Just.
Good time, I'm gonna say it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll make a motion to move forward.
All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Lowry, you have a second?
I second it.
You have a second, Commissioner Langston? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries four.
Still, still on.
Absolutely, still down.
Yes, sir.
That, that's all, that's all I have. Before that question's for me. Anything?
See, I, I'd like to say so. Um, what I'd like to see more, um, in the community, we were doing it, um, a few, I guess last year, um, when my, um, stepfather passed away, we had, we had some officers come by and just knock on the door with older people, um.
Yes.
Just check on them, see how they're doing, you know, and, um, I think I'd like to see more of that, you know? Um, I think it'll make, um, make them feel a little bit more comfortable.
Yes, sir.
But I know you have, they have other things to do, but not all the time, but every now and then, just let them stop by, knock on the door and just see how they're doing, you know? Cause we have a lot of older people that's, that stayed by themselves or been in the hospital and really can't do much, but I think, um, with that, you'll get a lot of support from, from the community, you know?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll do that.
Did you have a list at one time or something that somebody, they have a, somebody that wanna check on?
We do, we have, it's called the KISS program. A lot of agencies do it. KISS stands for Keeping Independent Seniors Safe.
Okay.
And so we have a list of folks that we stop by and check on and we'll add anybody to that list.
Okay, um, what, what's the procedure? What, what do you just come to?
They just need, they call the police department, tell our secretary Amber, they wanna be added to the KISS program and she'll get their name, address, phone number, and then that way, if somebody stops by and they're not there, they can call and check on.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Anything else? Matt? Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. C. Clark in Charlotte?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything unless someone has some questions.
Yeah, thanks for Ms. Charlotte. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, citizens to be heard. Anyone in the audience wish to be heard tonight? Come on up, eh, if you will, I'll let a piece of paper there. Like, what would print your name and your address, force?
Mr. P. O.
He's pinned up there. Matt?
Okay. Okay. I'm Chester Davis Knight, I'm coming to represent West Pro. Not any complaints, just that there's some loose solutions that we need to start looking at. Just a conversation that I had with, uh, Jim and looking at that ninety-eight alley, way, I, I was hoping that somewhere down the line before summer kicks in, that we can have a conversation or a get-together, have a workshop as to where we can fix that ninety-eight alley. Um, I'm following my trucks through on a regular basis and what happened, we have so much garbage out there just floating in there rather than in any container and we just need to come together as a city and find a way to fix that. The alleys are very narrow, so we can't put any dumpsters in there, uh, because of the blockage from, uh, Durant property, uh, on that side that's near the highway, but the alley is extremely narrow, so what we need to look at is a way that we can put something back that the trucks can reach. Uh, how we gonna do it is gonna take conversation and some planning, but we need to do that because summer's gonna come and when we remove that fence back there where we couldn't put the dumpster right there, it's causing a havoc right there and it's very nasty, especially where the restaurants are. especially where the restaurants are. And this is just something that we definitely need to talk about in the future. And what's happening when the guys are coming through there, they have to take you an extra forty-five minutes to an hour just picking up garbage that's on the ground. And, you know, they're not paying for all that extra, so, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna be a problem. Uh, but we do need to talk about it. The other thing.
Chester, you're talking about between First Street and Fifth Street and that alley?
Uh, when we're coming down the alleyway.
Behind the members.
Behind, behind all the restaurants.
First Street and Fifth, all the way down.
Right, all the way down. Now, you don't have any problem when you get past the theater towards, uh, uh, Field Street? You don't have any problem?
Well, you're going, you, you're going to, because you've already, you've got, now you've got colleges there and you've got, uh, the, the port lickers.
Okay, but see, those two are able to, we have.
Is it, is there enough room to?
Right, we can do those dumpsters. But the dumpsters just farther down, especially.
I know where you're talking about.
We can't get any dumpsters in that area, or, we're trying to move to what we call front loads, because they're easy to dump and get them out earlier in the morning. Uh, so we're gonna try to position a lot of the, uh, smaller dumpsters to make them bigger so we can hit them maybe one or two times rather than three or four times. Uh, so we're looking at, you know, trying to change some of those things in order to make it more feasible, um, and, 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 and save some money. Uh, the other thing I, I, we need to have a talk on is just stolen carts. We have carts that be stolen day by day, and some of them are just right around the corner from the house that's been stolen. But what's happening is when they're stolen, is the accusation to the company that the company stole the cans. We don't have to steal our own cans, but we have to replace them. And, and because this area is just what it is, I've been trying my best to make sure that we replace carts almost the next day or that same day. But at a time when they're going as fast as they're going, we have a problem keeping up with that. So we need to understand that sometime it might be three, four days before we can get some carts, because I'm constantly getting them in, constantly replacing them. Uh, and the broken carts, we'll eventually get to those broken carts, but if you have a cart, please know that we'll get one to you as soon as possible. But some of them come and say, you gonna get us a cart right now, and if you don't, we gonna do so and so and so too. All right, we, we, we can, we can get by the cussing out, okay? Um, the other one is, we're also looking for employees out of this area. We're hoping that the city or people that know, uh, people that wants employment, that can drive trucks or work with garbage, and we need to get them out of our own area. We have a problem with people coming in from Port Saint, I mean, Panama City or other areas, and they don't seem to put in the same kind of time or the, the nourishment for this community as those that live here do. So it's becoming a problem. And to find someone, to find someone else is almost, you know, out of the question. We need to hang on to them as much as we can. Uh, but we definitely need to look at some employees that can come in from our area. We're looking for those. Um, and then the other problem is if we got certain neighborhoods that we have told the garbage man that you can't come in till after eight or nine o'clock, okay? That, 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 that right there is a problem, because on my street, I supposed to put the garbage out at twelve o'clock at night or after that. But if we do that, what we're doing, we're causing the garbage trucks or the route leaders to go in certain neighborhoods other than others at a certain time, which causes a delay for them to finish that particular area because they have to go back after eight o'clock or nine o'clock. It's just something that we need to discuss and talk about. I'm not trying to, you know, say we need to do this today, but we definitely need to talk about. If I'm going down to a neighborhood in this particular section, I cannot go in until after eight or nine o'clock. I don't say Joe Beach, there's certain areas out there, you cannot pick up gar-, they don't want you to pick up garbage till after eight or nine, because the barriers problem, so they don't want to put the can out. But it's something that we definitely need to start talking about in order to make Waste Pro a better, better company.
Inside the city, though, if it's a public street, I mean, nobody has a right to tell you you can't pick up a can till after, I didn't, I don't think so.
We got wind mark.
Well, are they public streets or is that a private subdivision?
Depends on what phase it is.
Yeah.
Phase two, that's, that's us.
City on, I mean, that's inside, and, I mean, you'd like to be cooperative, but still.
We're, 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 we're trying to work, like the trucks, we, we're getting those trucks repaired. I, I got two new trucks coming into the area, uh, real soon, and, and, and our problem is trying to keep them repaired so they won't tear up the years and so forth and so on. Uh, but the garbage rate is getting bigger and bigger for one can. You got, you know, garbage stacking running out of the can, so a lot of time when they're dumping, it's damaging the cans to the point of, you know, we having problem keeping up with the repairs and those things. This is something that we're having to work out with the city. Uh, like I say, I'm not really complaining about it, other than the fact we need to work out some issues.
What's your earliest pickup time in the morning in the city?
We normally start somewhere around five or six in the morning.
I believe?
We try our best to be downtown behind the alleyways and downtown early, as early as possible, because if we don't, you have trucks that's gonna block the alleyways and so forth and so on. So if we can get in the downtown areas first. And like I said, we have had some problems with breakdowns and causing us to run late in the afternoon, but, uh, we're trying to work out every issue to the point that we can ask them to call Port St. Joe better than any other place.
Chester, look at your contract. I believe I'll look at it tomorrow. It's either five or six. Five or six.
In some places, we, like McDonald's, we need to be in McDonald's as early as we possibly can. That's one place, and we're trying to get them to help us alter their dumping site, because it's, the, the open door is open, but the traffic comes in, so we're gonna, we, I talked with the owner and he said he might consider it, but if we can change the direction that we pick up that garbage or that, you know, prevents some accidents or somebody walking in front of a truck or something like that. But anyway, those are the things that we need to, uh, talk about in the future, especially when it comes to summer. Those alleyways are real bad. I mean, really bad. And if the holiday gets to, you know, what's it gonna be? Last thing I want to do is the restrooms at the gym out there. Um, during events, is there any way that we can start talking about fixing up where those bathrooms will be accessible, uh, during the event we had Monday, yesterday, rather?
And then they what?
Accessible.
Well, I was gonna say something about that. They were locked.
Yeah, right, they was locked.
You saying accessible Monday?
Yeah, so you can get to them.
It was locked Monday, we couldn't get in, couldn't get in and use them.
Why were they locked?
We don't know why.
I don't think they should.
They just, they wasn't able to get to them, and so there were some young kids, and, and there was two girls, you know, girls that, that bugged my attention. They wanted to go to the restroom, so at the close of the day, what we had to do, we had to go back and get the sponsors to reopen the gym so those two little girls could, you know, use the restroom, because they went to the ones that were supposed to have been open, but they were locked. It's just something I think we just.
Which ones?
It's like this conversation.
Which restaurants? The ones that are attached to the, uh?
The one that just redid, the one that just did.
The one outside.
About concession stand room?
Right. Uh, I guess. They were, they were locked. And like I say, you know, just, especially our young little girls, you know, they need to get into some restroom when we have events out there.
What about the ones in the gym?
The gym, at first, I, I think at one time the ladies restroom might have been.
They were locked at first, but they.
Somebody come back in.
Yeah. And also, also the, um, the heat, I mean, it was freezing in there. Is there anything we can do about, about heat?
Well, we got heaters there, but it's just, whoever's in charge, just turn them on.
But, but also, um, we need, I, they called me and, um, need to be letting, let, let me know what the situation is before we get there, you know? Um, if, if I had been known, letting on that probably about three days before.
Okay, well, we had worked out, and the city did this, and, and it worked well. They had worked out a program with Joanna White as to how they were supposed to do things, and sometimes those things are just not adhered to. And if, for some reason, we get caught up in a communication as to who we're supposed to let, who have what, and we get lost. I think our mayor had to make sure that the chairs and tables were used.
Thank you, Don Grantland, now for there, his period took care of that.
And we thank him for that. We have a beautiful program, but the idea is that the gym is there and we're gonna pay to use it. Sometimes the communication get lost as to who's gonna provide, what are, what are we allowed to use out there? And I think we need to do a better job of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester.
I want to talk.
Come on up.
No, I was just gonna make a suggestion to the city. At the time that the gym is rented, that all of those things should be done upfront. And it's just as simple as that, I think.
Were y'all ever, ever able to get into the kitchen?
No.
What, what happened with the kitchen? They have a key on there.
And someone don't never tell the person, the key fits the back door.
Well, I told, I told, I, I, I told people there, they come and got that key.
Yeah, it fits the back door.
I said, be sure and go check that key right now, because it was Friday afternoon. Make sure key works. And then they didn't know. I don't know which door it went to.
So he offers the back door.
They don't listen. I mean, they sometimes don't listen, I guess.
Also, also, um, I talked to somebody and they told me that it's a pilot light that needs to be lit, and the gas company has to light it, so, um, in order for, um, you get in and turn the heat on, all that has to be done before, um, before turn. And, um, to, I'm just saying that, um, once you rent it, I mean, that should be taken care of.
Is that right? Can we? How about the heat in that gym?
I'm sure Mayor's. It's been a long time, I know.
Well, it, um, Mayor was, I was there, um, it was freezing in there, I mean, uh.
It was cold.
It, it, it was, it, it was ridiculous, I mean, uh.
Can we check that out?
I think, I think Commissioner Langston's got the right idea. If we know we got a big event coming, if, if we can get a couple of days notice, I'd be more than happy to meet Eric over there, and we can go and look and meet whoever wants to look. Why don't we do a walkthrough, make sure everything's taken care of? Because like I said, Mayor has dealt with tables and all kind of stuff on there, and if we got a couple of days, we can do a lot of good things here.
Yeah, I understand what Ms. Williams said, but, uh, at the same time, if you, if, if, okay, we, um, if I want to rent this place, okay, we still have to have time, they still have to have time to go get the, to get, let the gas people know that it has to be, what has to be done, and they come in and do what they have to do, and, um, go forward with that, you know? I mean, I understand, we understand what you're saying, it should be done. Once you rent it, you expect everything to be done, you know, but unfortunately, that, it didn't happen, and, um, next time we'll try to do a better job of getting it done.
I'd say one thing, too, if we know we're gonna have X number of people, if we feel we're gonna need an extra restroom, what we can do is we can have that extra key available. I think there's a key for those extra bathrooms, maybe. We'll walk through and check it out. Yes, sir, there's things we can.
Just gotta do a little better planning.
All right. Anyone else from the office? All right, Commissioner Langston, what you got for us?
Um, um, I just want to re- remember what I said about, um, the Martin Luther King thing, also, we had a great time, um, celebrating Martin Luther King's birthday, it was, um, the kids had a great time, um, great speakers, um, kids dancing, um, and, uh, it was just a great time. I mean, that was my second time, um, going to the event, and it just get better and better, you know, and, uh, it was good to see everybody there from the community come together, you know?
Don't forget about that, good food.
Oh, that's the mission. That was number one.
I, I miss that. I miss that part. We had a great march down Reed Avenue and MLK and, uh, good turnout, to be as cold as it was.
Yeah, it was freezing, but, you know, it was, it was, it was a good time, you know? Everybody had a good time and enjoyed themselves, you know?
Yeah.
That's, that's what it's all about, is peace and kindness and loving one another, you know, that, yeah, we had a good time.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right, that it? How about you, Commissioner Lowery? You got anything yet?
I don't think I have anything.
Mr. President?
I've got, uh, one thing I want to start thinking about, folks, uh, pole barns. Pole barns popping up all over the city. Uh, I've talked to the building department, and, uh, they're, they're coming, they're coming under our ordinance, and, uh, but they, they popping up in places that, that's affecting other homes, and, uh, the size, it doesn't seem to matter, the height, it doesn't seem to matter, whatever somebody wants, and if it's, comes under our building departments' regulations, which are our regulations, uh, they go up. Uh, the, uh, if you want an example of, of how bad they can get, how fast they can get, just ride through up Grove sometime and, and see what's happened over there. Uh, they put a pole barn before you know it, they got sides on it, they got, next thing you got windows and air conditioners and, and people living in them. Uh, and, and I think it's, uh, detriment to the values, property values of our city, and I'd like to see us, uh, can't vote on it tonight, but I'd like to see us, uh, consider a moratorium on, on pole barns inside the city and support St. Joe until we craft an ordinance that would somewhat, uh, regulate, uh, where they can be. Uh, I know there's one in town that's inside the city that's way above the roof line of the house itself, and, uh, it's just, uh, it doesn't look good for our city. Had some neighbors, uh, complaining about them. Uh, if they, if they're within the setbacks, uh, they can be there, you know? We, we got height restrictions on buildings inside the city, but, but when a pole barn's in next to your house and it's larger than top of your house, I, I don't think that's a good, a good thing for our city. And I, I want us to talk about it, talk to your neighbors, uh, I'd like to see it on their next, uh, uh, agenda, and us to see as we consider, uh, a moratorium on them until we can get some kind of ordinance crafted that, that would somewhat, uh, regulate them. So that's, that's our soapbox for tonight there, and, uh.
Thank you, sir. I've got just a few things. Uh, first thing I want to mention is golf carts. We have a terrible problem with golf carts if we don't do something. I mean, we got, I see children riding these things every day, going up the walking path where they're not supposed to be. Uh, some of them don't have the proper turn signals and things, and one day somehow we need to make sure that these golf carts have an inspection, two, every five, I don't know, something, to, uh, make sure they're operational right, they got everything they should have on them. And the next biggest thing, as I say, is kids driving. And if any of them's driving, you know, and, and like I say, I see them going up the walking path in golf carts. Kids, no, adults, the kids. So that's something I think we need to look at addressing. I don't know how we would do it as far as sending up the inspections, but I think it's something that really needs to get our attention to and see if we can come up with on it. So I'd like everybody just to be.
Yeah, with kind of golf cart orders. Yeah, they've got, you've got a number, and the number's attached to the first rooms that'd be real easy to send a letter and say, uh, you know, next twelve months, we're gonna ask you to bring a cart in for inspection. They do, fine, they don't, you know? Check them out, and then you can write them up. So, uh, I think that's a pretty good idea.
Chief Howard, sixteen, yes, Robyn?